So anyway, as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members in person is anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Plan, excuse me, Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
And Town Staff, when I call your name, please respond. Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner. Okay, and also we have for anticipated speakers, Kevin Whitney K. and our construction?
He's here, he's muted.
Yeah, I see he's here.
Yeah, I'm here, yep.
Kevin, thank you. Tom Zarico?
Yes.
And Scott Kinter? I believe he's here with us as well, but he's muted.
Yes, too.
So this November one, twenty twenty-three open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, which extends the Governor's March twelve, twenty twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http backslash backslash zoom.us and entering meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three zero five six, passcode one zero eight seven nine zero or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also broadcast live through local access, cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone. And you can mute your, mute or unmute your phone by hitting star six to toggle and once again to toggle or unmute or mute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds and earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they'll be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. So that done, the first item on the agenda is the October twenty twenty-three financial report, which I will read into the record. So we have, for October, we had payroll warrants for the Planning Director and Assistant Planner, PR twenty-four dash eight for the pay period and ending ten, seven twenty-three, and PR twenty-four dash nine for the pay period ending ten twenty-one twenty-three. For Planning Board expense invoices, we had Wise and Verizon wireless, excuse me, Planning Board iPad, ten twenty-five twenty-three. Under escrow accounts, we have Joseph Suwakka Engineering Peer Review, seven Bittersweet Lane, ten three twenty-three, Joseph Suwakka Engineering Peer Review, the Governor's Academy, Alford Coastal Science Center, formerly Presby, ten twelve twenty-three. Joseph Suwakka Engineering Peer Review for the Governor's Academy, again, Alford Coastal Science Center, Walkway, ten twelve twenty-three. And Joseph Suwakka Engineering Peer Review for Jackman sixty-eight Green Street, ten three twenty-three. And once again, Joseph Suwakka Engineering Peer Review, eighty-four Boston Road, K and R Construction, ten twelve twenty-three. So the next item on the agenda is K and R Construction, eighty-four Boston Road, Kevin Whitney. I know you're here.
Yes, I'm here tonight. How are you?
Good. Want to give us an update of where we're at?
So the project is moving along well. We're probably, I'd say, close to ninety percent complete. The building construction itself is complete. Septic system's installed, drainage system is done, the well. We even, we paved the binder pavements in place. The only remaining items are really landscaping, finished paving, and a few small items like that to follow next spring. And I'm also here tonight because we'd like to make a small change on the curbing. Previously, our engineer put in for sloped granite curbing. We would like to switch to a asphalt curbing. It's just a better fit for us. It's the same product that's used on the neighbor's property at the Newbury Self-Storage Ridge, same product that's used at the town's transfer station as well. I don't know if there's any questions.
When do you expect to be completely finished there, Kevin?
I think we'll have everything wrapped up in fall, probably May, June of next year. We really just need the warm weather again next spring to do the finished paving. And, you know, we did plant grass on the leaching field, but we need to just do the finished landscaping on the property next, next spring.
Yeah, I mean, one of the concerns that occurs to me about the curbing is whether or not Cape Cod type berm can stand up to the heavy equipment that you're going to be bringing in and out of there.
It actually holds up very well compared to sloped granite curb. There's not much holding a sloped granite curb. It actually just rolls over on its side. We run into a lot with plowing. Vertical granite curb is a different, different story altogether. But the Cape Cod berm, it's actually applied on top of the binder pavement. It's not off to the side on dirt.
And it, I mean, why, why are you requesting this now?
So I probably should have just told Chris York a long time ago. We didn't really notice what, what he had put on it from the beginning. I wanted Cape Cod berm. It was just kind of a mix-up on our end that it didn't get put in the plan.
Let me ask, turn to the board members. Pete, do you have any questions or?
Yeah, a couple. So Kevin, you say you're ninety percent done?
Yeah, we're, we're close to that. We, we'll be going for our final inspections probably next week so we can get occupancy and get into the building soon.
So when will those rock piles be removed, you think?
So that's ongoing right now. I would expect all the rock piles will be gone early, early in the spring. We'll be crushing throughout the winter to get that done. Right now, I know you guys are familiar, the rock pile was also on Bill D. Francisco's, the storage property. We've crushed to the property line and now there's just a bit more on our property that will have to get crushed.
Okay, so you think by May that'll be done? And then when, when will you be establishing the buffer?
Establishing the buffer?
Right, the tree buffer that was supposed to go in between the two properties.
Oh, um, so that, that will be at the tail end of the project. So that would also be along with landscaping and stuff in the spring, yes. Because there's no more planting season at this time.
Yeah, my feeling is, you know, get everything done, then, you know, run any modifications and ask us for modifications. That's my personal feel. Thanks, Larry.
Woody?
I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
No, Mary?
Nothing. Thank you.
So what's the pleasure? Martha, let me ask you, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, Pete actually asked the questions that I had.
Yeah, just, just to go back to, to the remaining work, Kevin, you gave something here. Well, you provided it to Martha. You mentioned propane tank installation, curving installation, fence installation, and final paving. All right, I'm sorry, you, you did say this, so the the tree buffer would be part of what you consider the landscape?
Yes, yes, that would be part of landscaping, yes.
And when do you, when, when would you construct the berm? Oh, the curbing, excuse me.
The curbing? That would go in right before final pavement. It has to happen before final pavement. Usually you do it about a week or so before.
So you got a little time then to?
Yeah, yep, that would be in the spring. It would be in the spring.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board? Pete, what do you want to do?
You know, I think you heard me. I'd like to see everything done, then any modifications, then we go from there.
Okay, fair enough. Woody, you?
I do have a question, actually. I'm sorry. This curving is in the front and on one side of the pocket area or is it around the whole perimeter?
Yes, I did supply a drawing. It's at the very front of the building and at the two entrances to the, we have an entrance and an exit drive. It said both of those.
That's what I was seeing on the, on the plan then. All right. Well, it sounds like there's a few things that need to be done and I think that in the future, in the spring, before your final paving, you could come back to us, I guess, to request what kind of curve, whether it's curving or berm. That would be my opinion.
Mary, you want to add anything?
No.
So Kevin, what I think I'm hearing from the board here is we'd like to defer a decision on the curbing until, till spring.
So?
The?
I'd still have to be asking the question before I finish the project because we can't do those either items without doing the curbing. That's why I was trying to just get ahead of it, but you know what I'm saying? I understand what Pete was saying, finish your project, then come back and ask, but this is, I can't do the landscaping and those items without doing the curbing first in the sequence of, of construction.
I guess I don't understand that, why the fence installation or plantings would, would be?
So you do your curbing. The curbing's about six inches tall and then the landscaping is behind it. You excavate to put in granite curb so you wouldn't plant your grass and do your landscaping and then excavate to put your curb in. You put the curb in first and then you put your, your screened lawn product in and then your plantings in with that after the curb goes in. It's kind of like painting a wall before you mud the, mud the drywall. You know what I'm saying? You just don't do one before the other.
Well, does that change anybody's mind on this point? I'm not seeing it.
No, I'm sorry. I still don't understand why the order is the way it is. That's all. I just, maybe I'm dense, but.
So I'm not getting any of the Mary, so.
The curb, the curbing goes in before finished pavement goes in because finished pavement butts up to the edge of the curb after the curb is in place.
Yeah.
And then, and then on the backside of the curb is where the landscaping is. So I can't change the curb after all these things are in, like I, I couldn't put the granite in and then take that out and put the asphalt curb in, in its place.
But all of this is going in, in the spring anyway, right?
Yes, it is. I mean, are you just saying you'd like me to come back in April and ask?
I think that's what I'm hearing, yeah. And I think, what I'm also hearing from the board is we'd like to see the, the site cleaned up some.
Okay.
I mean, we're not, we're not saying no. We're just saying it's a little premature.
Okay. So I guess I'll get back on the schedule. I'll, I'll contact Martha when we get closer to that time. But it would still be before we finish the whole project.
Right, well, that, that's fine. But in a more detailed schedule would really be helpful. You know, what needs to go in first, which, which timeframe is, you know, when you, when you intend to get it done.
It's really all weather dependent, Larry. A lot of it, it's, you know, the, the ground temperature has to be up to fifty degrees for grass to grow and whatnot, you know? So it's, it's really, it's, it's probably going to be end of April, May into June. You wrap everything up on a project like this.
Okay, and, and I, I would be looking for something from your engineer. He put in sloped granite curbing for a reason. And I, you know, I'd like to see a letter or something from him that, that Cape Cod berm is just as effective for this, you know, this property.
Okay, I can ask for that.
Fair enough. And it doesn't sound like it's any prejudice to you because all this stuff is going to happen in the spring anyway, so.
Yeah, I just figured it was really fit and finish on, on my property. I didn't think the board would care either way. That's, but I just wanted to go through the proper channels.
Okay, well.
I do have one, one, one related question, if I may. Kevin, is there a lead time on the granite curbing?
The granite curbing does have, you typically two months lead time. It's been bad through COVID, but typically it's two months.
And that includes both the radius pieces as well as the, the straight pieces?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I actually do have one other observation that came from our tree warden. He noticed that there was some fairly steep cuts behind the trees that are still in the, in the right of way on the right-hand side if you're facing the building. So I, I guess the request would be to, you know, make sure that you keep an eye on, on those and make sure that the roots are protected.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I believe all of that, all the earthwork is per plan on that side. But yes, it is, it is steep. I mean, even the plants, it is, it is steep on that side bordering the right of way. It is, you know, I believe a one-to-one slope there, so. But it, it has been cut for a year and the trees look healthy right now. We'll, we'll monitor though.
Yeah, come spring, see, see how they're doing. Thank you.
Okay, unless, Kevin, we'll let you go unless any of the other members, any of the members have any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All right, thank you. We'll talk further, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is Tom Z. for Zendico LLC, fifteen Coleman Road, OSRD. And this is a request for approval of the record plan and release of performance guarantee. We're currently holding thirty thousand dollars in cash. Martha, can you bring us up to speed here?
Uh, yeah, so, so Tom has submitted a, a statement of completion, a request for release of the performance guarantee. We did a site walk last week at which we reviewed Joseph Suwakka's initial review letter regarding the as-built. On Monday, Tom actually provided a revised as-built and his statement of completion as well as one of the things that we had noticed was that the the workshop studio that was relocated to fifteen Coleman Road is actually encroaching somewhat on the septic and utility easement. So he provided us with some language regarding that encroachment. Tom, we provided the as-built to Joe, who has actually reviewed it and submitted a letter today basically saying that all the items had been addressed. And Tom also provided a letter, some information from the landscape architect, Chris Huntress, regarding the landscaping and the planting.
And do we have sufficient funds in the peer review escrow account to cover? I'm assuming we're going to get one more bill from Joe Suwakka.
Yeah, we should be getting a final invoice from him and I did check that today and right now we've only got about twelve dollars and fifty-four cents, so.
Pretty sure it's going to be more than that, but.
It will be more than that, so we will need to get a commitment to replenish the, the escrow account to cover that invoice.
Pete, do you have any questions? Well, actually, I'm sorry, Tom, I should have turned to you. Anything you want to add to what Martha said?
No, gee, I thought the twelve dollars was going to be, no, just. You know, I, I don't know what's the simplest thing on that. If you retain a piece, I, I think it would be simple to hopefully release the bond and, and I'll, you know, either, either pay that bill immediately as I have in the past or put something into the, into the escrow account. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure that bill from Joe will be coming shortly and we'll know and I'll, as usual, I'll take care of it, you know, immediately.
Thank you. Pete, anything?
I don't have anything, but if you're writing checks, Tom, let me know.
Woody?
I did one for the public last time.
Me too. No, I'm just kidding. No, I don't have any questions other than I'm confused on the building close to the septic field. How does that all work?
If I can respond to that, Larry? Yeah, that, that it's, it encroaches about six feet. The, the easement is quite large, covers more, the majority of that lot that, that it's on, Woody, and a small piece of that building approaches into the easement. It doesn't affect, it doesn't affect facilities in any way. It doesn't affect piping, tanks, you know, leach field or, or reserve areas at all. It's just, you know, easements are always bigger than the work areas that they encompass and so it encroaches into a small portion of that easement.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I have no other question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary, do you have anything?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. If that's the case, I suppose there's no reason we can't give Mr. Zarico his money back. So would anyone care to make a motion to approve the as-built plan and release the performance guarantee in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, I believe it is? Subject to the condition that Mr. Zarico provides sufficient funds for the escrow account to cover the final invoice from the, our board's peer review engineer? Do you have a question?
Second.
All right, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear who moved first. All right, Woody, thank you. And there's the second?
Yes, I second.
And any discussion? Then Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So Martha, is that, I hope I should have asked you first, but is that motion in sufficient form for you?
Uh, yes, I think that's, I think that's okay. So we'll need to, I guess, the sequencing. I can see if we can get a, an invoice from Joe right away, but we do, you know, that is the condition.
Or even if you can get something orally and I'm sure we'll be happy to write you a check for that, whatever that amount is. More than twelve, fifty cents or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't forget to deduct the twelve fifty.
We've got it. Actually, it might be a little bit more with interest now.
Yeah, okay. All right, I guess we're good then, Tom. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank you all again. I appreciate, I appreciate the way you've treated me through this process. I, I know the last time you saw me that you, you saw a little bit of anxiety on my face and I, that was, that was, that was real and that was, that was me, but I appreciate you all responding as you have and, and, and giving me, giving me the respect through the process.
Well, thank you. You've been a gentleman throughout. We appreciate that.
Great, thank you both. Okay. All right, see you soon.
All right, next we have Scott Kinter, twenty-three Chandel Drive. This is a request for a change in form of performance guarantee from bond to cash deposit and reduction in the amount of the performance guarantee from thirty-five thousand one hundred and twelve dollars, which is the amount of the current bond to seven thousand dollars. So Scott, could you give us an update on where you're at?
Sure, Larry. Thank you for getting me on the agenda. I appreciate it. We're, we're pretty, pretty close to being complete. All of the work relating or associated with the right of way is complete with the exception of the really final wearing course in the driveway and the right of way. You know, there's, there's, there's no, there's no sloped granite. There's no, there's no Cape Cod berm. It's just, it's a, pretty much a simple, you know, detailed driveway. So we don't anticipate really any issues of really getting that done, you know, late spring. So that's pretty much where we're at, Larry. Open up any questions? Happy to answer.
So thank you, Scott. We've, I know you've given us estimates from your engineer for the cost of preparing the, the as-built and also from your paving company to complete the paving and I can't lay my hands on it, but I believe they total about six thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think I have a contingency in there of about a thousand dollars and maybe Martha can just, is that, is that correct?
That's correct. You were suggesting holding seven thousand dollars total.
Yeah, so I mean, the four thousand, it's, it's conservative, you know, on the, on the final pave of the wearing course. The as-built, which is two thousand dollars, it's, it's fairly conservative. So but I, I want, I want you all to be comfortable, you know, if you sit here, if you, if you said, you know, you, you weren't and you needed another thousand, you know, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to object.
Thank you, Scott. I found what I was looking for here. Yeah, so we've got the estimate from Johnson Paving Company for the wearing course on the driveway for four thousand dollars and also from your engineer for the two thousand dollars to complete the as-built. Pete, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, no, and then the contingency of that sixteen, six, seven percent, yep, for the other thousand, yep.
Okay, Woody?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
All right, and Mary, any questions?
I don't have any.
Martha, anything you'd like to add?
No, I guess I'm just sort of looking at the number originally. The estimate was only for the, the paving and then Scott and I talked about the fact that we, we needed to hold something for the as-built as well. And he was originally thinking twenty-five percent contingency and maybe this is nickel and diming, but if we did a twenty-five percent instead of sixteen, it would be seventy-five hundred instead of seven thousand. So I'm just putting that out there.
Well, Martha, for the record, I think it's a little nickel and diming, but I'm happy to agree to that.
I realize, I realize that. I was just kind of looking at the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, so your recommendation is seventy-five hundred, Martha?
No, just, just, just a thought.
Okay, well, would, would anyone, okay. So would anyone care to make a motion? So would anyone care to make a motion to approve the request in the form of the performance performance guarantee from the bond to a cash deposit and reduction in the amount of the performance guarantee from $35,112, which is the current amount of the bond to 7,7500? I'll take a motion.
So moved.
What number, Mary? 7,000 to 7,500?
7,000.
7,000. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Woody, thank you. Any discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So I think you're good to go, Scott.
Thank you so much. And we'll be seeing you when the weather warms up. And I appreciate all the collaboration, communication, especially with Martha and Kristen. It's been a lot of it over the last month or two. You certainly have an all-star cast there and you should be proud of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate kind words.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Just one one question, Scott. Do you need anything other than, say, a record of the vote in order to with regard to the bond?
I don't. I don't. I mean, that's all. I I don't need anything from you guys. So it's I'm prepared. I didn't prepare for the 7,500, Martha. Okay. But, you know, I I'm prepared for the seven. So we're good. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
All right, folks. Have a great night.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Gadsden Lane. Now, we're not going to have anyone here representing them. I believe Martha had a conversation with Doug DeShane's about this. So the issue is a request for approval of a restatement of Gadsden Lane Home Moves Association Declaration of Trust. A request for approval of the declaration of restrictive covenants running with the land. So Martha, maybe you can give us a little background?
Sure. So one of the one of the conditions approval for the subdivision was actually that the homeowners association declaration of trust and a restrictive covenants be submitted to the board for review and approval prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit. And for whatever reasons, that actually did not happen. There was a declaration of trust, which was drafted and executed and recorded at the registry. But when I had an opportunity to review it, it was actually there were some some errors in it, including the fact that the the document kept referring to the decision as a special permit, which it's not. So we reviewed it with town council, made some suggestions for revisions, which went back to Doug DeShane, and he has revised that document. Town council's recommendation was that it be drafted as a restatement of the original homeowners association declaration of trust. So that's that's one document. And the other is the declaration of restrictive covenants running with the land, which had not previously been drafted. So town council reviewed that as well. And we received the revised documents last week. And in going through them, we noted, I've reviewed them with Joe, at least in Mead's office, and we noted that there are a few minor tweaks that need to be made. It's not really substantive, but it's it's more clarification. And just before the meeting opened, I received some comments and edits from Joe, which I haven't had a chance to look at. But you know, they're 99.9% there.
So this is just a little tweaking to go then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, Pete, do you have any questions for Martha?
I don't. Thanks, Larry.
Woody, any questions or comments from Martha?
No, I don't. No, right now, no.
And Mary, same question. You?
Questions.
So would it Martha, would it would it be appropriate if someone were to bring a motion to approve the restatement of Gadsden Lane Homer's Declaration of Trust and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants Running with the Land and subject to final review and approval by town council? You comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that would be reasonable.
Okay. Would anyone care to make that motion?
I'd be happy to make that for you, Larry.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Hearing then, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay.
There will be one more step on this that Doug DeShane is working on right now, the tripartite agreement, which was the form of performance guarantee, actually expired in July. So we're working on an extension of that. And I expect that will be before the board relatively soon.
Okay, thanks, Martha. All right, moving on the agenda under old business, we have potential zoning amendments for spring 2024 annual town meeting. Martha, do you want to bring us up to speed on this?
Sure. I think we have less to talk about tonight than we anticipated. We had been, well, we've been talking about the inclusionary zoning for quite some time, and it's been high on our list of things to do. We did learn and and we had been thinking that that was something that we needed to do, sort of in conjunction with the MBTA community zoning in order to get an affordable, you know, some affordable units, some requirement for affordable units. Kristin and I met the other day with Ian from MBPC, who had, excuse me, attended a meeting with representatives from the state who clarified that as part of our MBTA community zoning, we can't actually include a requirement for up to 10% of the units to be affordable at 80% of the area median income. And we do not need to have inclusionary zoning in place in order to do that. So we we talked with with Ian. And given, you know, given all the the other planning efforts that are going on, and particularly the housing production plan, it seems like it might make sense to defer the discussion of the inclusionary zoning as something, it's a recommendation in our in our master plan, will be a recommendation in the housing production plan, and that those those efforts can kind of set the stage for the inclusionary zoning, give us a little bit more time to go through you know, the the draft, which was based on West Newbury's model, and also the the state template and other other things to really think about the 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 trigger and other components of it, like setting up an affordable housing trust if we want to do payment lieu and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you. I I just wanted to clarify something. I I know you've all seen a draft bylaw that's been attributed to me. And I did do the typing, but I did not author that. It's 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 almost verbatim, the West Newbury bylaw. And I I prepared it not with the idea that that was going to be the final product, but just as something to get a discussion going and to highlight the issues that we need to think about when we when we get to our own. So I just wanted to make that clear and give my thanks to West Newbury for their for their model. Anyway, Pete, what do you what do you think about Martha's suggestion?
Yeah, I know we've been talking about inclusionary zoning by law for quite some time, and I can appreciate the the MBTA communities are kind of kind of trumping this at this point in time. And I think, you know, that's that's acceptable. I just don't want to lose this off our radar screen. And I know that this board won't let that happen. So I can understand the sequence of events.
Good. Thank you, Pete. Woody, anything you'd like to add?
No, I I like what Peter just said. It's something that we should have and we shouldn't lose track of.
Yeah. Mary, anything you'd like to add?
No, good old both guys.
Yeah, no, I I think it's it's very much on our radar screen. And Pete, I know how passionate you are in particular about this. And I don't think we're gonna, we're not not gonna lose sight of it. But I think Martha's point's well taken. This might not be the time to to address it. There's a lot more work to be done. I think. Okay, great. Martha, unless there's something else you wanted to say about inclusionary housing by law, we can move on to the next item, lot regularity?
So this is another one that's been on our radar for quite some time, based on, you know, some of the the yield plans that we received and subdivision plans that we've been dealing with. And trying to wrap our heads around it, we did go through you know, some examples from what other communities have done recently. And Kristin and I were hoping that we'd be able to, you know, perhaps have a recommendation ready for the board. But it's actually, it's very complicated. Sort of thinking about the various various ways that one can think about it. So we're actually kind of reaching out to some other people who might be able to give us some some guidance before we try to recommend anything to you guys.
Martha, are you leaning one way or the other at this point?
No, I mean, there's some examples that are interesting to me. Like ones that will exclude certain areas if they don't meet minimum dimensional requirements, you know, from the area calculation. But those get complicated. I think the the thing that we ran into before, when we made the previous proposal was you know, we had an engineer who took what we were proposing and created lots that complied with those lots, and they still didn't achieve what we wanted to do. They still had, you know, some portions that were only a few couple of feet wide. And and so that's and that's what we want to avoid, you know, situations where you've got, say, a two-foot, 200-foot long connector between two portions of a lot or something like that. So.
Very tricky.
Very tricky. Yeah, it is tricky. And, you know, I I get concerned about unintended consequences, too. I mean, if you if you set up some sort of a system for doing this or some kind of a template or formula. You know, it's helpful to be able to chase it through different scenarios to see, you know, what you might end up with. And ensure that you're still not ending up with something that's really not what you're looking for.
Right.
You know, we want to create good, usable lots that aren't as creative as some of the ones that we've seen.
Don't look like a jigsaw.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yes.
More to come in that, then, I guess. And then wireless communications, Martha?
And then wireless is kind of really starting to to move forward with some discussions following up on David Maxon's recommendations for a location in Byfield, potentially at you know, at or near Triton, and also sort of looking at his his prime location, which was the Highway Barn on High Road to get rid of the or deal with the dead zone that's down in that area. And that one's tricky because our the our current dimensional requirements for the the tower and fall zone and stuff like that don't really work on that site because it's very small. So just trying to think, think through all of that and see what what the openness might be for for locating a tower in Byfield. So.
Okay. Well, we have the bylaw in place. It's just a matter of adjusting the overlay district map to accommodate an appropriate site. So.
Right, right. And we, you know, we do know that there's active interest on the part of Horizon for locating a tower on High Road. And they they also have have identified the Highway Barn site as being sort of ideal in terms of signal location. But we kind of have to work through that.
There's a there's a height restriction issue there, I think, too, isn't there?
Yes, the representative that I spoke with said that they would really be looking at putting up an 80-foot tall tower. Our bylaw currently limits the height to 65 feet. And then trying to, you know, fit that with the falls on the board does have the discretion to, I think, cut the cut the setback by 50%, but we'd still have to look at how that can actually fit on on that site. So.
Yeah. The fall zone makes the town highway barn tricky, correct?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
Any other questions for Martha before we move on? No, I guess not. Then why don't we go on? And once again, unless someone has anything else on the zoning, we can move on to liaison reports. Martha, you're up again, select board.
Select board, there's been no actual sort of regular meetings since our last meeting. They did meet on the 27th of October in executive session for contract negotiations with the new fire chief. And he was sworn in today and and did the tour and met all of us. So we now have a a permanent fire chief.
Good. Anything else?
No.
No. Moving on to the ZBA, their regular monthly meeting is on November 16th. And there are a couple of items on that I believe will be on the agenda that have of interest to us. The Foley and Bittersweet Lane petition for a variance regarding the common driveway that we've seen recently. So that's on the agenda. They're looking for a variance for the angle of the street intersection in the in the the cross section of the of the road. The other item of interest that we may well see at some point in the future, depending on how this goes, is the Sunset Club on Plum Island. They're have petitioned to to amend a previously issued special ZBA special permit for the installation of a 45 40 by 40 pavilion in eight by 20 storage container on the site into approved use of a 7 by 30 section of the site for removable storage sheds. So depending on what the ZBA does, I I expect that would come back before us at some point on the site plan review. So I'll re report more on that after their their meeting. Next would be conservation. Woody, do you have anything?
A quick question, Larry. When is the next ZBA meeting?
November, the ZBA is meeting on November 16.
Okay.
So two weeks from tomorrow.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And on conservation, we didn't have a meeting since our last meeting. So there's nothing to report. The next thing is next Tuesday, I believe.
Thank you. Martha, anything on MBPC?
Yes, a couple of things. The commissioners met on November 19. There was a special presentation on on sort of transportation there, MV Vision Zero effort, which is, I think I've mentioned this before, looking at reducing fatalities and and serious accidents. And sort of other transportation planning. And then the planners meeting was on the 26th, and we focused discussion on MBTA communities and how you know, how how the different communities are dealing with it and any any questions that people have or struggles that they're having with it. So.
Is that it, Martha, for MBPC? Okay, and you're still on because the next item is the planning director's report.
Well, first of all, a reminder of a few upcoming meetings. First of all, we do have our meeting next Wednesday on the 8th to review and discuss and potentially adopt the the master plan. Be looking at the the final draft, which Emily has prepared. And she will be with us at the meeting. So if there are any any questions or whatever, they can be addressed to her at that time. We have the Kristin.
Before you move on, just to clarify that will be a special meeting next week on the 8th solely devoted to the master plan, won't be anything else on the agenda.
Right.
I'm sorry for interrupting you. Go ahead.
No, no, thank you. Thank you for doing that. And we will be doing that by Zoom.
Right.
And I did send an email out to everybody with the plan, but if you And I um did send an email out to everybody with the plan, but if you don't, if you don't have it. Um, let us know. We can resend it. I think it's also up on the website. So.
Thank you.
Um, also Kristen sent an, an email out today. We're trying to schedule a meeting with Ian. Um, from MVPC on either the thirteenth or the fourteenth of this month. Uh, for the in-person workshop that we talked about regarding MBTA communities. Um, so I think it's a doodle poll, and if you could respond to that, that would be great. We can get that set up.
What, I have a question. Wh- what is doodle? I didn't, I opened it real quick before the meeting, and I don't understand what it is.
Kristen, do you want to take that one?
Is this working, by the way? I'm sorry. I'm, okay. Just checking. Um. It's just, if you click on the link, it should bring up a bunch of options for dates and times. And then you just write your name, and then you just click the bubble, yes, no, or. If need be, like, I can do it, but not my favorite. So it's just a way of everybody putting in the times that they're available. Um, we were looking, we were, would like to. Ha- hold this meeting before Thanksgiving. Um, but with the master plan meeting next week, we're looking at the following week and hoping there might be time on um Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
Let me know if it doesn't work for you, Woody, and we can just email each other and figure it out that way.
Okay, I'll respond to it tonight. I, to be honest with you, I opened it and it wanted me to accept terms of service or something, and I just, I.
Oh.
I'd ask what doodle was in the first place, and.
Yeah, try to just, you should be able to do it without, like, giving them your, you know, your. Vitals. So try to just say no. It should still let you put your name in, but not, like, require you to do email. So if it, if it looks complicated or weird, just skip it.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Kristen. Um.
Um, and the other, other meeting that we have coming up is uh going to be follow-up on the housing production plan. We had the regional meeting. And this is going to be an in-person meeting focused specifically on Newbury. And um, I. I think, uh, Chris, if, if I'm wrong about this, I think we have. Settled on December, Monday, December eleventh, um, over at the library in the evening. I can't remember if we're looking at starting at six thirty or six.
I, it hasn't set in stone yet, so if anyone has thoughts on that, they're welcome. I was thinking six thirty would be a good starting time.
Now, now who were the participants in it?
That's the, a public meeting.
Okay, but I mean, who, who's on the panel? I, I, I have to admit, I haven't uh. Um, attended any of those meetings.
Um, it's a follow-up to the first housing production planning meeting, so um staff from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission are. You know, working with Martha and me to sort of lead the charge on that effort. Um, so it'll be Lauren Kiesling kind of. Leading that with our support. So I think, yeah. It should be a very interactive kind of meeting. We're having a, our sort of first planning meeting. For the meeting uh next week, so we'll be able to share more and sort of be great to get your input on. How to sort of take the next step in terms of talking about strategies for creation of more affordable housing in the community. Um, so it'll be kind of getting into more detail about. The production plan up, update and goals and strategies.
So we did have about fifteen Newbury residents attend the, the regional housing production plan and then participate in our. In our breakout room, so you know, we're hoping that we'll get good, good participation and um. You know, this is intended to, to provide a lot of kind of local information that will go into our portion of this, this housing production plan.
Hmm.
So those are the upcoming meetings. A couple of other things, we are, you know, getting to the point of, of being able to close out more of these projects, so we are anticipating um. Having the Governor's Academy, the ACRC, um, building formerly known as the Presby on the agenda we've received and as built. Which um Joe has for review, so um, assuming all goes. Sort of as anticipated, this would probably be on the agenda for the November fifteenth meeting. And um, I, this one question will be, is whether the board. Uh, would like to hold a site walk, um, and if so. Either before or after that meeting. It was helpful for Tom's project to have Joe's review letter in hand. Um, but the building itself is fantastic, so I think everybody would, you know, probably like an opportunity to see it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be great, too, before. As long as it's not as cold as it was when we went on the sidewalk last time.
It was cold.
Yeah.
Right, that sounds good. We can coordinate with Tom Woodruff at uh, at GOV's and, and put out some dates to see. Um, and I'll, we'll coordinate with Joe to see when we might be able to get his review letter.
Great.
And next meeting, we're probably also going to have an A and R for lot line change between uh two parcels or two lots on Fatherland Drive. And finally, just a reminder that um, the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative um. Follow workshop series is out there. We sent you an email about that, but if you need me to resend it, I'm happy to do that. There are a bunch of. Workshops, and I think that they're all virtual, virtual. Zoom things, so.
Good.
Their trainings are typically really good. That's all I have.
I'm sorry.
I said, that's it.
Oh, okay, thanks, Martha. So our last item on the agenda are the October eighteenth uh meeting minutes. Uh, has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yes, Mary? Uh.
I, I did not.
No.
I did not either.
I guess maybe we'll hold that for the next meeting then.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll get to them.
You better.
Pete, too.
Okay, well, that's it. It's everything on the agenda. Seven fifty seven, so would anyone care to move to adjourn the meeting?
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion? And hearing then, Pete, how do you vote?
Sure thing.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you all.
Thanks, Larry and Martha.
Thanks, Martha. Thanks, Kristen.
See you next week.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.